You ready, Dawn? Okay, let's take care of the minutes.
Under the agreement approved under the K-CAM stabilization program, it needs to be said in there that that's a three-year commitment. That when you sign that stabilization, it basically, you know, procures their services for three years. Otherwise, it makes it, this sounds just like, oh, well, we approved the rate stabilization program, which doesn't mean anything. It locked us into three years. I think that needs to be identified.
I don't have a problem adding "approved."
It wasn't part of the motion, so...
Well, it's true.
Add it at the end.
Sure.
Or we could add three-year rate stabilization program above in the correspondence.
That's fine.
Okay, so, N-K-CAM, three-year rate stabilization program?
Rate stabilization program agreement, I would say three-year contract because it's basically, we were signing a, it's an agreement, but it contracts for three years. I would just put three-year contract behind that at the end.
Can I have that, Marjorie?
Yeah. Read it back to me, once you get it done.
N-K-CAM rate stabilization program, comma, three-year contract. Or we can just put three-year rate stabilization program agreement.
Where did you put that?
Up under correspondence.
Oh, okay.
At the very end of the sentence.
I would say three-year rate stabilization, myself.
But that's misleading because what it's doing, by signing that, you're agreeing to a three-year contract. It's not a three-year rate stabilization because the contract already exists. It's a one-year option, but we chose three years.
Come on in, Marjorie.
It's for clarification so that someone reading this who doesn't know what it is...
So, why, after K-CAM?
K-CAM rate stabilization program agreement, three-year contract.
Why don't we just put K-CAM, comma, three-year rate stabilization program agreement? Just put three-year in there.
Right, but it's not a rate stabilization program agreement for three years. It's a three-year contract that if we agree to, we get the rate stabilization. You have to sign the contract to get the rate stabilization for one year, remember? The deduction's only good for one year. It's like, was that eleven thousand something off the first year? You don't get that again for the continuing two years. You just get it the first year.
But you get locked into a rate stabilization where it will not exceed eight percent.
It doesn't say anything about the discount in that. I would say you put three years after K-CAM, right before rate stabilization. Because that's what we were signing, a three-year rate stabilization program agreement. The motion was on the rate stabilization program agreement. It had nothing to do with the discount that we received.
Then why would you agree to it if it had nothing to do with the discount?
It does have something to do with it, but the motion didn't have anything, didn't say anything about it. We accepted the agreement, which part of it is a reduction there. Any other corrections?
I'm going to strongly discourage you, Dawn, from using words with my name that say things like argued. Commissioner Flue argued, Commissioner Flue, this and that. I mean, you're trying purposely to portray me in the light, whereas I'm entitled, as they've told me many times, I'm entitled to my opinion. So for you to choose words...
I didn't mean it that way. I meant that you, your point, the point that you were arguing was this. So we can change it to debate, or, or I don't know if we can even strike it. I didn't mean, I didn't mean it that way. I was trying to pitch your side.
Maybe you can say stated instead argued.
Is that okay with everybody?
Mm-hmm. I think it would be clearer when Commissioner Wallace, you have his explanation of Nylander versus Lincoln County, and it says in the bottom there, the last, like, three sentences up, which ruled that all elected officials are equals and that the Board of Commissioners are responsible for approving the budget and that elected officials have discretion over how the budget is spent. I think the clarification there should be that elected officials have sole discretion over their own budget because the way that's worded, it's just not clear. I think what you were trying to say, Aljo, was that each elected official has sole ownership of his or her own budget and discretion over how it is spent. The way that's worded kind of makes it seem like elected officials as a group have discretion over how the budget is spent. And I'm just trying to clarify what you were saying, which is not that all elected officials have discretion over the budget, but that each individual elected official has discretion over his or her funds within their own budget.
What if you add each and then their different budget?
I think that would try to better explain what the opinion was there.
Where was, um...
Each elected official has, so you would, and that each elected official has discretion over, you can say their own budget, and you can strike is spent and how the... And that last sentence, Dawn, it's just a grammatical thing, but you have Commissioner Flue argued that due to the fact that the county attorney has control over the spending of her budget and the board cannot control the expenditures, so therefore the county attorney entered into an agreement with herself as owner of O'Hare Law LLC. It's just, that doesn't read properly. You might want to just say, if you changed it to stated, Commissioner Flue stated the fact that the county attorney, if you put due to, you would have to have a clause on the other side of the sentence that says due to this, therefore that. But the so therefore kind of just isn't in the right place there. It might just be simplified if you take out the due to, the, due to the, or that due to. And then you technically need a...
The other two, as you guys...
You'd also kind of need a semicolon there with the so therefore.
What are we changing?
Stated to the fact, stated the fact, that due to, take that out.
All in agreement?
I don't like that. I don't know that, um, that's her opinion. The fact that she has control over the... I think maybe we better take out fact, too. Stated that the county attorney has control over spending her budget.
All in agreement?
Fine. Anything else? You have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minute it says corrected.
I'll second. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, Sally?
Aye.
I oppose. Madam?
I just wanted to share the good news that Shirley Gruber donated her vehicle to us, which we all already know, so, that's all. Works fine. Took it to Hays Thursday, and it was running very well.
Is there still a warranty on part of that?
No.
If...
Is it your intention to just use that one for the Health Department?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And we're going to sell the car?
That's what I would like to do.
Who's the car repairer?
Um, he was gone last week. It's repaired. It's just the computer needs reprogramming still, and then it will be ready to go.
I move to produce a thank you note to Shirley Gruber on behalf of the Commission.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, Commission. Give a thank you to Shirley Gruber for the donation of her car to the Health Department. Any questions? Not in favor, Sally?
Aye.
Donna, do you want to make a digress?
It is.
Yeah, I received a call, I don't know whether it was the day you were in here or the day after you were in here, from Shirley asking about the need of a vehicle and that she had one that she was wanting to get rid of. In our conversation, I suggested that she contact Ladonna and also contact the county attorney so that all the paperwork could be done correctly. I think Becky Raffburn was kind of the go-between Shirley and the county, but it worked out very well, I think, and Shirley was very pleased, I think, to do it. And Gruber very pleased to get it, and we had a good conversation on Friday when I visited her, so...
And she requested that Aljo be in the picture because they're old friends and and thank you very much for coming around, visiting with her and smiling. It's very nice. That's all I have this morning.
A woman that has worked extremely hard earlier in her life and has been very gracious with the results of her work of gaining money and property and very generous to the communities. We do, we do appreciate it, I think, very much. Thank you, Ladonna. Thank you, Ladonna.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, this is yours about the members of the meeting that you're going to, election of officers. Voting, we have a couple bills from Mid-America. One deals with state fire marshal stuff we need, and I forgot what the other one was.
What was our follow-up plan on the elevator situation? Were you, Dawn, were you contacting the elevator company that we used to see if they would take on the nursing home elevator, or...
Yes, I will. I haven't, but I talked to the service guy when he was here and gave me the card to talk about. I'm a little preoccupied with other things.
No, that's fine. I just didn't know if we were, how we were doing the follow-up.
I think he was going to go over and take some pictures to send to the guys, so...
Did you, you said you had Nextech out here because of your suspected hacking of your system? Did you have some kind of statement of that so that we can verify that that's happened? Or how were you going to go about that?
They're supposed to be sending us, they're bringing us a proposal here. They're going to, they assessed our network, see where weakest spots are, and then they'll bring us a report to let us know.
Is that going to verify whether your suspicions are true?
Um, no. They, they said our system was still intact, although we have had numerous hits onto our system. Apparently, it's like on a daily basis. And one department opened up a faux email and, but their computer was so old that they, we just shut it off and it hadn't hit our server yet, so, and it was replaced.
Okay. I think the board, are you in agreement that we should maybe see this report from Nextech to view what the status is of our network and...
I have assumed, I assume that they will suggest more firewalls of some kind, but I don't know that.
Well, initially, what they told me is, and they have sent me a bid for patching, that not all the computers are, because we are not all on that managed service agreement. Some of the computers are not getting updated like they should be getting updated. So they call it patching, is what they call it. And then maybe a little bit more better antivirus on some of them, even though they take care of all of them, I think maybe they need to upgrade. And Nextech is working on any program themselves that will monitor things a little bit differently.
The computers that aren't on there are the ones that are too old to be on there, etc.?
Anything that was more than three years old. They would take on, so...
That was part of that plan that we looked at that was too expensive, we couldn't do, that they wanted to upgrade those computers ever?
Every three years.
Yeah, every three years. The cost involved was pretty high.
Well, the Sheriff's Department went on that.
Didn't they?
I think us and the Health Department did not ignore the ambulance, but we did install new firewalls with the ambulance in here. And for some reason, I think the Health Department had a new firewall installed, too. So, because our firewall was old enough that it was hacked of, so... And then they also said, too, as part of the thing, that they would set up some, like, send us faux emails and see if we click on the links. And then if we click on the links, then they would put us through training. So if, that way departments would, you know, start recognizing that not everything is a good.
Yeah.
Do we use the same company to clean down at the EMS building as we do at the Highway Department?
You are?
The same cleaning company that we talked about last week that does, oh, no. I'm sorry. We use, I didn't know what that bill was. That was the John Deere, or the... I'm totally off base. I'm sorry. Let me start over. Do we use a cleaning company at all for any of the buildings?
We had, we had the carpets cleaned at the EMS building last year or so ago. That was the only cleaning company I think we've ever used.
Okay. I said John Deere. I meant the Port of John.
Do we do rugs still? Do we change out rugs? We don't do that anymore.
That service where they come and pick up the...
We did, we did that one, that one time.
I think Pete bought it.
The Highway Department mine, but...
Do they have...
Pete bought his own and then he took down the Health Department. Then they're supposed to, we borrow from that.
I'm sorry. I was still thinking about that bill we got for the, um, the Port of Johns that we put out in the, in the different locations, and I was confused about what that company was, so...
Yes.
I'm sorry. You already told me they changed their name.
That bill came from a new company.
Yeah.
I assume Lain's bringing a quarterly report, so...
Do we have any further updates on what is going to happen between Street and Street as far as the bid winner for the repairs and then how Johnson and Campbell are going to alter their plans?
The last that I knew, they were going to set up a meeting.
Between those two entities?
I ran into Mike the other night at the restaurant, and he said they hadn't set anything up yet. That was the last I knew. They were going to set up a meeting. I don't know if there'd been contact between Royce and the engineer and all that. I don't, I don't know. I haven't talked to Royce, so...
Get started with Deborah, maybe a little earlier.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Have the usual reports. [inaudible]
You have this CD that matures in February of this year that was a 12-month CD, but it's still listed, but there's nothing under the interest statement. Did that just reabsorb?
It just didn't get taken off of the report.
Oh, but where did that money go?
I don't know. I'll have to go look, but it was either reinvested or it went into the money market. Which one are you talking about? The counting one?
It's CD 6159 under Citizen State Bank.
Is it a Pitterd? Is it a children's?
Yes, it's listed under Pitterd.
The interest of the other health firm down the line?
Interest always goes to children's.
Any interest from this account goes to the other account? How come that's set up that way?
Well, it wasn't set up that way, but Pitterd is to be used exclusively for collect talent.
Okay.
We've only had one in that entire time I've been here. So that was created to help children with other health problems.
The other one, the children's, so then you're just letting any interest roll over into that one from the, uh, from the principal and the, and the Pitterd fund? Do you receive the applications for that from the Children's Health Endowment Fund?
No, there's a board.
The board, the board does?
I think most generally, they apply to Ladonna. She called me, the board, I believe. She had the application, but then... I don't know if you, do you have any for that, Dawn? Strip for you, Dawn.
So, are any collected taxes around about the same? Is that what I'm seeing?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Have you talked to the county attorney about a tax sale?
I give her a report every September, and then she
decides.
Decides if there's enough money out there for the process she has to go through.
Yeah.
When is the last time we had a tax sale?
Oh, probably seven years ago, eight years ago.
Seven years, I guess.
I think they usually try to weigh out whether the costs exceed, what did they, what, the wide expense involved in advertising?
Certified now.
Yeah.
Can we not do our own publication if we wanted to?
I think they're asked to be a special kind of newspaper. So have we seen any rise in CD rates that we could invest?
There was a couple published in the newspaper and I'll call, but that's not for public.
Public, for government money.
Public, for government money.
What is the column escaped taxes?
Added and escaped are, one is abated. Added and escaped are the same thing, it's when we missed something or somebody maybe came in and tagged a vehicle that they purchased several years prior. Then they have an added or an escaped and I think they're mostly escaped because you'll notice there's nothing under the added, but they're really added tax.
And I think based upon the type of tax they are, if it's escaped or added tells them how many days that they have to collect the tax. If my memory serves me right. And a lot of the holdings, when we do add it, it will either, you put it in as an escaped tax and then it starts the process and it just depends on what type of it, if you're adding personal property or it was to, just to, it classifies as an added or escaped.
So, these original tax amounts that are listed by department, is that based on what was approved for the two thousand seventeen budget?
Well, that's more your question than an abstract.
That's based upon the levy.
From two thousand seventeen?
Yes, so you take the budget divided by the valuation to get the levy. And trucks, that's personal property and real, trucks and watercraft are done in another formulary. Trucks are, are a, like a commercial? Yeah. Well, not, no, it's not commercial, it's big farm trucks.
Right.
Um, they're taxed at a flat rate that the state does based upon average motor vehicle levy. And watercraft is the same way, I just don't remember what the formulary is for it, but it's like down to like point oh five percent or something. And then it's based upon the average cattle levy as well.
Any other questions? The treasurer? I guess I have some related to this, driver's license, are we people being able to figure this out or?
Which part of this? We have new equipment.
You have new equipment?
It's been challenging. It takes probably ten minutes to load every morning and it's it's been challenging.
Have the uh, people been bringing their necessary paperwork?
As a real ID, some do, some are in a time crunch and they choose to just do regular.
So, so you, we, we still have the regular available?
But we try to stress after twenty twenty you won't be able to fly if you don't get your real ID.
And those that do not get that real ID that are updating them today, can they come in and bring the necessary equipment and then you can, you just basically go in and?
Scan all their documents and reject their license. For another nine dollar charge.
What is the difference between the two?
A regular Kansas driver's license is not federally compliant.
Okay.
Then you have to be, or you have to file for an extension and Kansas has become compliant, so by twenty twenty you have to have that little star on your driver's license.
Okay, it's just an issue with the way that it's formatted on the license, not a separate ID.
You have to have birth certificate, don't you?
Birth certificate, social security card or first page of your income tax or something that proves your name and your social security number, if you have a passport, that's great, if you're a woman and you're married, you have to have a marriage license.
So, is it gonna be a federal mandate to have that identification?
If you want to fly or go into a building, we're not allowed to do that, yes.
What about voting? That would solve a lot of problems, wouldn't it?
What about existing? People that aren't due to have their upgrades and they still fly?
Or somebody like me that just got there last year, um, after twenty twenty I won't be able to fly. I'm forced to be in the.
Gives nine dollars.
Yeah.
Ten would be a round member.
You mean they're not gonna accept passports?
Oh yeah, you can, if you have a passport, you're fine.
Oh, I meant for flying, I mean.
Sure, if you have a passport, that's a federal document.
I see what you're saying, okay, if you wanna fly without a passport, you have to have a federally approved state ID, driver's license or, okay.
Yeah, how long is your passport for? Twenty years, I think.
Mm-hmm, typically. I think if you're young, I think if you're under eighteen, it's less time or something, yeah.
And then also January one, we're supposed to have a new system for driver's license, but they're gonna keep the fail safe button this time. So, that probably won't help a problem having an emergency.
Did they ever get it fully functional? Okay, if else have anything for Leanne? Thank you, Leanne, for your work and for your reports.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Leanne. Contractions? Uh, Leanne, tell Deborah to come in. Tell Deborah to come in.
Dawn, I didn't get to ask you last week, I forgot, how, what do you do with the mail-in ballots? When they come in, are they just collected and held in a specific container?
They go into a ballot box.
They do go into a ballot box and then they're just opened on the, the collection day?
They'll come in probably around five, but so by the time they get started, it'll be five thirty. And the rule of thumb is you have to leave at least three ballots in the ballot box, so they'll start opening ballots up and straightening them.
Before you begin?
Then they check the envelopes to make sure their signatures are on the envelopes and things like that.
Morning Deborah.
Good morning.
Yeah, get your chair, bring it up here to the table before. I think you're up.
Do you, which do you, where do you wanna start? Evaluations, performance evaluations, or the insurance numbers?
Let's start with insurance.
Um, I can tell you that, cause I looked on Friday, Plan A, there was fifty-one year old C seven Q two N zero J one. That's sixty-one four employees waived and we still have three open positions. I can't really evaluate savings at this point because we have more new employees come, go, so on and such, so it's gonna be a little bit difficult to do that very quickly. Um, but that gives you an idea that some employees did choose different options for next year, so. And I didn't have anyone who didn't complete their enrollment, which is very good, so every one of them took the time to take care of it, so it turned out good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll just pick and we'll do job descriptions next.
All right.
So, pack it for each of you, Dawn, I figure you already have them enough, you've seen them enough, you didn't care about a copy, okay.
Unless you're making changes in the papers?
I am, um, I haven't gotten through everything that the departments have brought back, I asked them all to try to return them around the first of November with any changes they would want to see. But there's a lot of them to go through, the ones I brought you guys were the ones that basically are the individuals that you would be, like department heads. Ambulance director, Director of Public Works, um, the road and bridge supervisor, health department, um.
Appraiser.
The appraiser.
And Dennis.
And, and yes, now, there's a couple that I'm not sure who's going to do that because we never really got that far at the last time with the process, like the custodian and like the recycling center, they're kind of on their own, but they're kind of not on their own, I don't know who's, whether that would be something that you guys would do those, it would be my assumption that you would, so I can bring those as well.
So, have you made any suggestions here?
Uh, some, some of the department heads, because we're in the middle of.
On these?
We're in the middle of getting ready for the election, so I haven't.
Yeah.
And like I said, most of them just brought them back to me, um, the insurance department, we have to do a new one, I think we're gonna have to redo one of the bus ones. Cause one of theirs is so old that I don't know that they know where the one is, so.
Okay, but have you made any corrections on?
A few.
On, on the ones you just gave them?
Yes, the ones that I gave you, not all of them have been updated based on the department head's recommendations, but some have.
Okay, but do you know where the recommendations are that they've done?
Nope, not off the top of my head.
Oh, okay, okay, I didn't know whether you had, you had noted it.
Just an email, did it email you or how? No, they sit down and they usually go through
You.
all, all of them and sometimes with their employees and they make corrections, they make recommendations on them in writing. I think he's asking you where that is.
No, I'm just saying, is that stuff on here?
Most of them, I believe so, I don't think there's any that I did, but I'm not a hundred percent sure because I have fifteen.
But you didn't distinguish the changes that?
No, most of it was um, taking a couple things out, um, uh, some rephrasing, like Terry's looking at the appraiser. It's not, it's called.
Orion?
Orion, they switched their
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
Program to Orion, so it was things like that.
Okay.
Like when Leanne went through hers, there have been some changes with the state regarding the things that they do now there compared to what they did before, so we had to add some things to them, things like that, nothing drastic.
Okay, basically it's?
Road and Bridge, we shifted some responsibilities when we went to Public Works and whatnot, so it was adding the fact that you brought in the weed department and the, the transfer station. There wasn't major things that changed, I did bring emergency management. But I think that, I don't think he made any corrections or I think his, he thought looked fine. This one was just on top, so I'm gonna use it as an example, but under ambulance service director, it doesn't, I noticed it doesn't say if it's full-time, part-time. I don't believe any of them do. If that's a feature that you guys wanted to add in the descriptions, we could. I think the last one said it was a full-time position. I don't recall, it, there is the potential, um, I know that it used to say that it was exempt from overtime when it was salary, so I know that we changed that because now it's not. State mandated? If they're an hourly employee. But I mean, is that state mandated that they are salary, they don't get overtime pay? Being salary does not constitute being exempt from overtime, it's based on the job duties, the job responsibilities, things of that nature. Well, no, I'm saying if that's not state mandated, then that's just up to us.
No, it's federally mandated.
It's federally mandated that if you work more than a forty hour week, even if you're on salary, you'll get compensated for it.
Depending on what's your job responsibilities are.
Federal agreed standard is the one that sets those guidelines and there are, there are some exemptions from being exempt from having to pay overtime on the position, on certain positions and it's based on their responsibilities and their duties. So, you're saying, this one says the ambulance service director is a non-exempt position? That's why that's stated here? Yes, because he's on an hourly wage, so he would be entitled to overtime.
And even if he wasn't, he still would be entitled to overtime.
That's what I'm asking.
No, because, yeah, because, even if he was salary, because he's performing more work than he is administrative.
It, it, where he is now, yes, the, the way the department is set up now, yes, it would still potentially still be non-exempt, the way that it was a while ago where the person was predominantly administrative, then there could potentially be that exemption, you have to look at the position and what that position is doing, not the person so much. I did forget emergency net shit when I was going through my list of people that you guys would be evaluating, so that one is. On here. I can print it off and bring it down before you guys go today. I would like to make the suggestion that maybe the first Monday of December, we go back to this and that each board member bring their own corrections or additions and then we can. It would be nice if you would each make, kind of like the department heads do, write on their things that you would like to see and if you could get it to me ahead of time so that I could update it, so you have like a finished copy and then you guys could, could have, kind of have that, that would help too. I think if we.
I did, you'd have to do three separate.
Yeah, I think if we bring, if we bring everything and discuss it, say on December fourth, then by the end of the month, we still have three more Mondays, we're, we'll agree on, at least two of us, we'll agree on the corrections and then. I just don't wanna get at the end of the year and be rushed trying to get them done. But I'm saying you may, you can't just add all three corrections and then we edit, re-edit them, we may as well each edit our own. That's fine. Bring it to the table, then give you the copy that we converge all three with, do you know what I'm saying? I just thought that, could we just do it a little sooner?
Yes, I think we should.
Is what I'm, my concern is, I don't wanna be pressed at the end of the year trying to get a ton of things done all at one time.
One after the other.
So, could you take two weeks?
I would, I would suggest that we work on the twentieth, that these be here the twentieth. We'll meet on Monday, the next week we will be meeting twice on Monday and Thursday. As I was looking at the calendar, my recommendation is that we do not meet the twenty-sixth of December, that we just come in on the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
And basically that will be a pounds payable and transfer of funds meeting, so we can get out of here, courthouse will be closed at noon, I assume, won't it, we usually have it.
Normally we close to the public at noon, yes.
But I would just suggest we come in the twenty-ninth and.
That, that was my link there, cause could we move the timetable up a little bit, I just don't want it to pass the year when I get to.
I guess I don't see a reason coming in the twenty-sixth on Tuesday and coming back on Friday because the girls won't have the girls, I'm sorry, the staff will not have the uh, bills and accounts payable.
Thank you.
Caught myself, didn't I?
So, I'll come back on the twentieth and then you guys can have any recommendations you have.
I think, I think we will discuss those on the twentieth.
I like that, okay, um, I scheduling
I would, I would schedule, um, yeah, I, I would schedule, let's see, we're still meeting at eight, aren't we? Why don't we?
Until, that's why I said the first week of December.
Ten, ten. If we can, if we can do this at ten till we conclude, if we can get the business done before ten, the agenda done before ten, then we can.
On the twentieth?
Work on this, yes. Would be my suggestion.
I know I gave them to you before, but performance evaluations, again, I what are your thoughts, I mean, did you guys look at them at all?
Briskly. Yeah, I did.
We talked at one time that you kind of thought that maybe you'd like to see it a little more condensed?
Yeah, I would, I, I would like to see it condensed, my other problem with this is. I, I would like to see it condensed. My other problem with this is that, you know, the budget does not appear to be able to do
So.
merit raises at a consistent level.
So maybe although it's in that, maybe kind of take that part out of the policy?
I guess I would, you know, I, I think we need to think about that considerably. The other thing that I think we need to go to is we can't...
Wait a minute, did you just say that we're going to take the employee evaluation appraisals out of the policy?
No.
No, I didn't. I was talking about the appraisals based, there's merit.
Based races.
Merit, there's merit.
There's a page in the policy.
There's a page in the policy, has merit on it. We've never been able to totally fund it.
You mean our existing evaluation policy?
Yeah.
We've never been able to, to fund it, so I'm not sure that that is a...
And we never really put the...
We never put any amount.
But I, I put, I would be...
The other point I wanna make is that I think that three or four pages or however long this is, is way too long.
Do you want me to?
I think that we can go to more of a, I guess I would call it a checklist and then where at the end, we put a summary
Okay.
of maybe, uh, goals, uh, that we see. I think we need to have a place for the employees also to have goals and, and we need to have some goals set there. And to me, that reflects better than all this, uh, writing on each and everything.
Okay.
I don't know whether there's anything out there, but I, I do think, I do think, I don't know.
Every county has something a little different. And I have copies of some of the other counties. I've seen some on the listserv, um, email box. Do you want me to try to condense it?
I guess one thing that, that I, let's just take this page here, Deborah. You see it has, I don't know, there's organization at the top.
Okay.
Organization, needs to be, attendance, interaction with others. To me, that can be aligned and we can rate it one, two through five.
Mm-hmm.
You know, this information is important.
Yes.
It needs to be provided to them and for us, so what we know what we're looking for, but we don't need... When we get done, all we need is one piece of paper, myself, I think, signed on the back with the employee's signature and with those goals and things. To me, that's much easier.
How about taking this points column? It's about half, two-thirds of the way through. And you can apply that scale he was talking about to each one of these headings as a ranking system. And then you don't have to have a written description. I agree with that. You don't need a written description, but, because if it's a problem, it's a problem and we should ask about it.
Right.
But if it's a good thing, it's a good thing and it'll be a positive point.
So I'll try and take this and put it more in with this and see what I can come up with and maybe bring that back as well. I'm not sure I'll make it by the twentieth, but I'll try to. So then you have something else to take in mind.
You know, if, if you're on a one to five scale and just say, meeting the public
Mm-hmm.
and the person gets a check in the two, he knows that he needs to work on that. I may give some direction
Mm-hmm.
when I talk to him, but to me, that's an indication that, that he needs to work on that. If I give him a four, you know, he knows I'm doing
It's pretty satisfactory.
I'm doing, I'm doing satisfactory work. He thinks I'm meeting the public well, you know, uh, and things like that.
And like you said, you'd rather like a check system with some listed things and then a comment section down below, so, okay, we can do that.
And if I may add, I think it's crucial, like you said, to allow the employee themselves a comment, but I think they should be able to evaluate their own department head because with us meeting once a week and having no direct contact on a regular basis, the only way for us to assess those whom we are in charge of is to ask the, the under personnel. I mean, it, this isn't the same way as a corporation works where it's just trickle-down all the way. This is basically an efficiency rating from the bottom up because we are elected to be here. We're not here because we own shares in the corporation. So for us to take into consideration, number one, how the employees feel about their department heads and also what we should always be doing, which is how the public feels about the general performance. I think it should, it's invaluable that the employees give even themselves a rating and then a section under how they feel the administration is. I mean, I see a lot of tension over basically that trickle-down effect that we have been using and it's that's not necessarily customary for a public official to be in that role. We should be more on the receiving end of information to make decisions.
And I'll be...
We do have a section in there, if I may, um, where there is a self-evaluation for both the supervisor and the employees and it asks, you know, um, things that they like about their job and don't, asks about their duties, asks what things they think that, what changes and improvements would you like to see implemented? And ask them about, so there is some of that in there. Maybe not in those words, but we do ask the employee when they do that to, to tell us what they think could be better.
Yes, and I think this self-evaluation chart that's already existing is more like what you were saying could be the general.
Right.
It doesn't have to be so cumbersome with, um, wording and writing out a whole essay for each section. But I think this should be, you know, you can have two sections. Rate this for yourself, rate this for the administration. And that way we have a comparison. You know, if, if you're sitting there saying, well, I'm wonderful at everything and the administration is not good at anything, then that's kind of a, that's a wash. But if you have someone who's willing to say, well, I need to work on this, but I'm pretty good at this and the administration has never done this for me, yet they always do this, then that's a more appropriate way to assess an evaluation. You have to have that comparison, otherwise
Well, I...
You're getting just the one side of it.
I think that that needs to be in the employee evaluation that he's doing with the supervisor. You know, and we, we can look at those. I mean, you know, we can look at those, but, you know, when, i- it's gonna be just like us sitting down with the department heads. They're going to be doing something, we're going to be doing something and we're going to compare. The department heads should be doing that with their employees also.
I agree.
Yeah, so, so I think that's where we will see that, myself. I don't know that, we need to go out and search for the employees, I guess, to, to evaluate their department. I think that's gonna be a part of the employee evaluation that the department head is doing with those people he's supervising.
Yes, I, I see what, I see what you're saying.
But in that scenario, you're not allowing for criticism to circumvent a direct retaliation from the overseeing.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think there's, I don't think there'd be any difference in me asking them and, and the supervisor asking them. They're going to... Cause they're going to know that I'm going to, if they butcher this supervisor, I'm probably going to question the supervisor, uh, because of the employee's comments. So I'm, I'm not sure that there's, if you're willing to, to make some criticism, it doesn't matter whether you make it to me or whether you make it to the, the department head, I don't think.
Well, I think it absolutely does because we've seen a recurring issue with this, you know, in, in several situations. I understand what you're saying. If you're talking about a chain of command, if you have an issue, you go to your supervisor, if it's not taken care of, you go above them. But we're talking about an evaluation where that person is allowed to objectively say, I don't think this is being handled properly. You're asking them to go to the person who's not handling it properly.
I'm saying they're going to do it on the evaluation that they are given prior to their meeting with the supervisor.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, no, no, you may ask.
I'm not even sure I know how to ask it. Do the department heads know, this is a new evaluation system? Do the department heads and their employees have, know what the requirements are of, do the employees know what the requirements are?
They have, they have, they have jobs.
And the department head knows what the requirements are based at the start of employment.
Yes.
Not necessarily, because we already went over the issue that the current, um, you know, um, and like the, the current ambulance service director did not have a job description that correlated with his job and he's been here for two years.
He has had a job description that has correlated with his job. There are always things that need to be updated and changes, but every one of the department heads has had a job description. He's had a copy of the job description. Has there cha, things changed when he became the director compared to any of the prior ones? Yes. But things change all the time.
And the employees under him know his job description?
Yes, well, they should, if they don't. Well, to be, to be honest, do employees come in all the time and say, did you make any changes? Can I get an update in the job description? No, they really don't. The employees know what their job duties are and their responsibility. When a position opens up, we ask the employees to review it. You know, um, we kind of review with them what's changed, uh, what, what, what might we need to add or remove or change compared to what, um, let's say the health nurse, Lada would say, hey, you know, take a look, what's changed?
I understand that. The department, usually like a personnel handbook has, like what schools would have. They have the job description of the administrator and the job description of, let's say, the teachers or the employees.
Yeah.
So everybody knows what's on first base.
The job descriptions aren't in their handbook. And I don't know.
And I would say is, when I was a former county employee, no, I did not know what my boss really did. And even, even as I was training for this position, I'm still learning. Every day is something different. And I, I do employees necessarily know? Probably not.
Because they're not the ones doing that job. But they know the overall basis.
But it might be helpful for them to kind of have an idea, cause they might not be as, as critical if they actually discover what their responsibilities are.
And vice versa.
And vice versa, yes.
Guys are doing their job, the scout.
And that's why it's important to review them and that's why when we have positions that open up, we, we do that. We look and see what's changed. You know, what, what do we need to change? What have, what are they doing now that they weren't doing before? You know, and, and how can we change it so that the next employee coming in knows what their responsibilities are?
I don't think it would hurt to have the employees have the job descriptions prior to their evaluations.
We usually hand them out. Well, we did the one time that we did them, but we haven't done them since, so yes, that would be something that would need to occur. And I thought it was somewhere in the policy, but, you know, we did it, I think you guys, I think we did one wave of it and then it never happened again.
Yeah, we did a part of a wave the next time too.
It's gonna be a new thing for the employees to be evaluated and it's gonna be a new thing.
It became time-consuming, extremely time-consuming.
It will, but it will be an important thing.
Yeah, but it won't be near as much as that, the old ones, if we get it changed. Well, thank you, Deborah, we need to move on. We've got a full schedule.
Yes, I got someplace else to be at nine too, so, okay. Thank you.
Send Mike one, please.
Morning, Michael.
Morning.
Hello.
Sit down, Bob, there.
Mr. Jeremy Rosebrook is here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we visited last week and I'd like to see if we can come to a solution and
Okay.
a, uh, signed gravel permit ready to go.
Okay.
He wanted a few things to visit with you guys.
Yeah. Morning, Mr. Rosebrook.
Morning, there you go. I was talking to Michael. I was just wondering on how, how long it's been since you raised the rate you paid, but how in the future, i- if things change just due to inflation and stuff, how is that handled on when you guys decide to raise the rate or?
Do you remember when we changed that?
I don't have the date. It's probably been close to seven years now.
Has it been that long?
I think if you look back, it was like twenty, twenty-ten or twenty-eleven.
Twenty-two.
While you discuss, I can look that.
Yeah, it, it's, you know, I think that's one of the things that we look at, uh, when surrounding counties start raising the rates. You know, that's, that's one thing we look at and it became apparent to me, I guess, probably a year ago after, uh, listening or visiting Mitcha County that certainly their price of gravel was much higher than ours. I think they just actually entered into a negotiation last summer, wasn't it? Not this summer, but maybe in their last, may have been sixteen, I don't know, fall sixteen or something. I know with their gravel pit and I was amazed at the price that they were going to pay and, and we probably give me, we need to adjust and I think I've had, Michael, you've been looking at some, we're eating some grain, so, you know, I, it's probably something we need to look at every two or three years. I mean, you know, as the amount becomes more scarce, price goes up, as we, as we know in the farming business, when there's plenty of grain, it's cheap when there isn't. And we're getting to a point in this county where, uh, available gravel, I guess, at a small cost of uncovering is becoming a premium. So, yeah, I think we will be making adjustments with the gravel.
Would you be in agreement, I guess, it's gonna be awful hard, uh, for us to make a major change because of budgets already. Would you be in agreement to doing something on a graduated three-year scale or something like that? To get it, you know, up to a...
I have a point of clarification. Are, are we talking about a gravel pit where the county had previously contracted with you and there, it has expired? But we now have gravel that has been uncovered and is sitting in piles, correct? Okay.
You know, the number that you were talking about
Twenty-eleven.
would cut our ability to gravel in half for the year that's already budgeted. That's what I'm getting at, if we could do it, you know.
What are you looking at, raising to?
Did you ever hear anything from Ottawa County?
Yes, they do not use any pits. There's only one sand pit in Ottawa County and it's private. They're hauling out clay center, inch and a quarter roadstone at a cost of eleven-twenty-five plus shipping.
What was Mitchell County?
Eleven-twenty-five what?
A yard. A quarter roadstone.
A yard?
Ten.
Your, what was Mitchell County paying?
They're, they're anywhere from two dollars to three fifty from sand to gravel.
Where was that?
To limestone, Mitchell County.
A yard?
Yes.
You're requesting what, Jeremy?
Well, I started out at two and a half, but, oh.
I guess I would say I don't have a problem with two and a half. Like I say, if we could do it over a two-year period or whatever, you know, bump it to half this year or half next year.
Okay, let me, while we're talking about that, let me ask one more thing. I was wondering if there's any way, and of course if you're graduating, it, it'll give the county incentive to get it out, but is there any way to have a minimum pulled out? I was curious, like, I'd just like to be able to count on
X amount.
Like two thousand dollars a year or a mile or, you know, what, that price. But I realize that causes problems for how many pits you have.
I guess I would defer your question to Bob. It's been around the gravel pits. Is there any way that we can, is that gonna be impossible for you guys to?
It can be pretty hard to set up a guarantee because of weather, flood related projects, or we may not get to, you have to go somewhere else or if we're pretty well got roads taken care of in the area for around your pit and we got bad roads somewhere else, it may not get taken care of that year, it might be end of the next year, but like I said, it's pretty hard to say we're gonna take a certain amount.
A minimum, minimum now.
I wouldn't say thus, the block pit is empty, so I'm sure that's gonna increase the amount of gravel going out of your pit, don't you feel? I mean, we all drop, block gravel, you know, sometimes farther than we would have liked to because of the quality of the gravel. And it's gone, so I would say that it's going to increase the amount that comes out of Wolf Creek, your pit, you know.
I guess the other thing, Jeremy, I would say, and we, we would need to think about this, uh, is that we maybe could make a minimum payment for gravel and deduct it as we take it out. I mean, you know, uh, say we give you two thousand dollars this year, but we don't take any out. And we've already paid you two thousand for the gravel, you know, and if we do that every year, you know, uh, cause I know some years, such as the Bolti pit out here. I mean, I think that one year we paid her twenty thousand dollars, didn't we? Cause I mean, we had a lot of projects coming out of that pit, but we haven't paid you probably for a couple of years now, or maybe a year. I don't know. You know, that, that's the problem that we have and I understand your, your, you know, you don't, that's not a guaranteed income. You know, you just never know when it's gonna come and, and I don't know, we may be able to look at something along that line where we would pay so much a year for so much gravel and then it may be the next year before we pull it out of your pit, you know, because oftentimes when we start pulling gravel out You know, because oftentimes when we start pulling gravel out of a pit, it's a considerable amount because we're in that area and we need to do a lot of projects. We could certainly look at that, I guess, and see how that we could budget that in.
Yeah, they gotta say is when you're getting towards the end of the pit, you gotta be careful.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah.
Cause then you'll want to land or back if they happen.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And maybe just on pile gravel, we can pay so much, you know. We have an estimate of how much pile gravel there is there and pay him for the pile gravel or part of the pile gravel. That might be another way to look at it.
Well, I can understand, you know, twenty thousand this year and nothing for next year. It's a little hard to to
Yeah.
eat, to keep it even out. I don't, you know, I don't think you're out of line on the price. Unfortunately, we budget in July for next year, so.
What would your first price be?
Well, we're talking about a dollar fifty increase. Dollar now. Half and a half.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I I was assuming we'd have to do a dollar seventy-five or two dollars probably this first bump, I would guess. I just, we're so far out, I guess we're
Got it.
we're outlying quite a ways, I think, probably, you know.
You want another two now and then we'll bump the other fifty cents next year.
I think it would probably behoove us to contract and pay outright for the amount that's there. Because we have contracts we just signed this year expecting those people to stay at that dollar rate for the next three years. I mean, unless you're gonna
Oh, I don't know, no, no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna just change one pit.
All we did was contract for the pit, we didn't contract for the.
We can, we can increase the gravel.
Yeah, we've done that.
Well, I would like to see that be reassured instead of just a verbal conversation here because those things tend to disappear around here.
I think that's the way we did it last time, isn't it? When we raised it, we raised it during the middle of the year and everybody got their raise.
Yeah, I don't think I don't think we can have one one rate and one another. I think that that could have been fairly so.
Whether they, a gravel pit's got a pile in it or it does not have a pile in it, we pay for it when we haul it out. So if we do an adjustment, what's piled there would get adjusted right. The sad thing is, it does take a little bit of time to get everything on the agreement sent out to people, people to get them motorized and to get them turned back in too, so. Sometimes over a hundred and twenty days.
Well, the only reason I did what I did was just because I've asked before to increase it and it was just, this is what it is. And I just wanted kind of have a way to, I was curious how the negotiation would be in the future, what your what your plan was on how to increase because just through discussions I had, it'd been, what, fifty cents, seventy-five cents for maybe ten years and you know, it's not necessarily keeping up with inflation or I just felt it was worth more than that. I I know I was getting the dollar, but the road, if it's getting more scarce, it ought to be worth a little more, not looking to gouge you.
And I guess I would also tell you, Jeremy, this is a two-edged sword. The more we pay, the more we will ask for taxes.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, that's, that's, I mean, we've got to fund the budget and when we pay more out, we've got to figure out some way to get it back, you know.
I understand.
So I, I mean, you know, it's, it's a two-way sword and those people that have gravel pits, I guess you would say I've been very generous and contributed to this county probably in the last three or four years, especially significantly, because we have not been paying probably the going rate, so.
And in my opinion, you know, the gravel pits are kind of placed around the county where you're looking at these other counties, they're having to haul it in and distribute it. You still have an advantage.
Yeah, 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 we we do, we do have an advantage. Yeah, I think Mitchell counties are in the, actually the western part of the county. And so it is a long haul over into the eastern part of Mitchell County.
But Mitchell County only maintains what, two hundred miles of road?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the rest of them are township road, so.
Seline County is looking for gravel. So the prices are gonna go up? Like you said, it's, it would be a long haul.
And that's, and that's one of the the other things is that we need to protect our gravel pits because there is no law that says some other county can't come in and open gravel pits in our county and all that, as they have in Lincoln County before. And it has taken a lot of gravel into Mitchell County. There should have been left, that I would like to see left in Lincoln County, but they, you know.
So you'd be at a dollar and a half or a dollar seventy-five starting out? And then in a year, you're thinking you'd jump it up again or?
I think, I think we'd have to budget, we could budget it in eighteen for nineteen because we've already budgeted it.
Yeah.
We probably can stand it in eighteen, make some adjustments, I would guess, but just have to.
How do you make that assessment without knowing the average amount of gravel that's been hauled over the last four to five years?
Well, we know, Michael has.
You know?
He knows how much.
You know?
I don't personally know, I don't have the.
Right, so I'm asking, how are we negotiating a price right now without having the slightest clue how much gravel has been hauled over in an in an average season for the past five years?
It usually gets close to about a hundred thousand.
I'm, I'm sorry, please let them answer because I, they're the ones making the decision about the money.
He normally comes in over here and tells us.
So based on your long-term experience here, how much money have we been spending and how much gravel have we been hauling out in a in a given year that you're able to determine the price for next year?
I think that we're determining the price for next year because the gravel pit guys are asking for an increase.
I have, yes, I I commend you for coming in and addressing the commission. I'm actually surprised that more haven't. I find it astonishing that one person can come in and make a request and we're all, we're automatically considering it when there have been other people come in droves about certain things and we've turned them away. But again, the question is, how do we make a budget?
I don't think anyone has come in here and requested an increase in the price of gravel that I remember.
No, this is the first time that it's been brought to the commission. There are other issues where people have come in repeatedly, but we've ignored. What my question is, how are we gonna sit at this table and come to an agreement about a dollar amount right now without having any analytical assessment of how much gravel we've been hauling, how much we may need to haul and what that's gonna cost? Based on the fact that we've continued to budget one hundred thousand dollars for gravel and overspent that by a hundred, a hundred and fifty percent.
Actually, we don't budget that for gravel, we include times that we have to buy rocks and quartzite and other things.
No, last year we budgeted, there was a budget for a hundred thousand dollars for gravel and we spent a hundred and forty-five.
And how much of that was rocks and quartzite? We didn't spend a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars on gravel.
I don't believe we did on gravel.
Out of the, out of the fund?
I think there was sixty thousand dollars in two months, if I remember, I come out of quartzite.
But I'm saying that's a decision that you made at this table to do that versus increasing price for our regular gravel pits, which you haven't done for seven years, you said.
The places that they put that rock was to add to the gravel that had been put on the road. It wasn't adequate.
Again, without knowing the amount of gravel that we are going to export and potential rock purchases from quartzite, how do we make a price negotiation without that information?
I think the market is driving this issue.
I'm not making a statement that I'm against raising the price for gravel.
No, I, I'm just, you're just asking and I'm saying the market is driving the issue.
So when are we gonna take responsibility for the actual budgeting process and know that we are going to budget instead of one hundred thousand dollars for gravel, two hundred thousand and at that rate times if we change it to a dollar seventy-five or whatever that may be, we will export and distribute exactly you know, Y amount of yards for the year? How how come that is not part?
I don't think the yards of gravel don't vary that much, do you think?
Oh, it can from year to year, this year we didn't haul.
Well, it's definitely had all the flood stuff, but in a normal year, you're gonna haul close to the same amount of gravel every year.
Very similar.
And what I'm telling you is I'm not, without those numbers in front of us, I'm not comfortable with you negotiating a price, is all that I'm saying. It it's not, it's not even logical. Which I'm willing to negotiate, just uh for the record on on my part as a commissioner, but I I feel that.
Well, for one thing, that's kind of what I was getting at doing it over two years because this year's already been budgeted. So it's gonna reduce the amount of yardage we can haul, probably, maybe not, depends on how much quartzite rock we have to buy to go along with the gravel. That's, you know, when you start talking about, what, ten bucks a yard? Rock, nine something. You know, when you start having to add rock to it, you know.
The expense goes up.
Yeah.
I understand.
You know, when you're paying four times as much for rock as you are for gravel.
This is precisely why I have asked for reports from the highway department for us to be able to say, okay, so over the last five years, we've hauled exactly, you know, one hundred, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of gravel, which has, at a dollar, has been Y amount of yardage and we expect to do the same next year or we're planning not to do that next year. You know, we're, we approved a budget where we basically are expecting to spend the same amount of money on gravel next year as we did last year. It's been a hundred thousand dollars on your, on your gravel line item budget for what, four or five years?
Yes, because that's the max amount that we can haul when the weather allows us to haul. That is why. You know, unless we wanna haul more gravel, that means we hire outside trucking source or we buy more trucks and employ some more employees to achieve more gravel than what we can normally haul in a typical year. That is why the number is set where it is set.
But that's based on a dollar a yard, is what I'm getting at.
That's correct.
So until you do the calculations to know what your maximum would be at two dollars a yard, you can't negotiate a price, is what I'm saying. You'd have to know that. If a hundred thousand dollars every year is the maximum you can haul, you'd have to know how many yards you're hauling in a given season. And that hundred thousand.
If you run out of money, you stop.
I guess I'm confused.
I mean, you know what I'm saying?
It looks to me, it looks to me like we're paying a dollar now, we're gonna go to two dollars, so we're gonna buy half as much gravel as we did before.
Exactly, which is a problem because we've already said that we haven't been putting enough gravel on. So that's a catch twenty-two that you just said. If we're only gonna, if we're gonna be paying twice as much and only haul half as much because it's twice as expensive, then where's the gravel gonna go? We don't even have a plan for where it goes now.
And I think we've tried to explain that it depends on how much rock we have to buy. Rock is what makes the difference.
From what I've seen, and I had gone much further back, we've, the past two years, we've spent about fifty thousand dollars on rock on quartzite. In addition to whatever we've spent on gravel. Has that been a trend in the past before, prior to the, these last two years?
No.
No, so that's a new purchase.
Well, you know, we always use something, you put gravel down and it's not adequate, you gotta go in and add rock to it to make it adequate, right?
So how much do we have stockpiled from the last purchase we did from quartzite a few months ago?
Now, I'm not exactly sure what's there, I'd have to measure the pile. There's several.
We purchased that because they offered us a deal on it. And we do at some point where we want to haul it.
I could be mistaken, but I'm sitting here looking at what we paid APAC and we paid APAC far more than fifty thousand dollars last year.
Well, yeah, that also will be chip seal and stuff like that.
No, because the chip seal comes out of something different. This is gravel.
Okay.
This is gravel, rock and sand, because the chip seal comes on the chip seal line, right?
We answered your questions till we make a decision.
We'll make an adjustment.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
What else you got, Michael?
I have, uh, received bids back for the Highland Lake Dam inspection. Um, I submitted to three engineering firms. One is Booker Willis Ratliff, I believe, out of Salina, uh, Schwab Eaton out of Deloitte and Kirk and Michael out of Ellsworth, and there were two companies that responded.
How often did you say that this dam has to be re-inspected? They wanted someone assigned to it?
Every three years. Pretty standard.
Is that DWR Stockton that we were dealing with?
What's that?
DWR Stockton who we're dealing with.
Essentially, yes. Leonard Bristow.
So we have Schwab Eaton at eighteen hundred dollars and Kirk and Michael at fifteen hundred dollars to perform what you're expecting is the same task, to prepare, prepare the report, to do, do the inspection and prepare the report to the state. Did you ever visit with Kirk and Michael to ask them that that was something that they would do as part of a contracted monthly?
No, all that stuff comes separate. Anything as far as doing per miss inspection, stuff like that, please actually have an hourly charge, even if you were in the, the monthly contract.
The inspection and the report would come as a separate fee?
And a duty, yes.
Okay.
That's not one of the services that would be allowable with that.
So I move to accept the bid from Kirk and Michael for the state mandated inspection on.
It should be a DLC.
Yeah, um, Highland Lake Dam DLC zero triple one.
Do you have a second?
I'm sorry.
They moved in second. Is this a one-time deal, Mike, or are we going to?
Every three years.
But, but the price will
Yes.
be negotiated each time?
This is for the initial.
If you so choose to have it be, if you so choose to have that bid, typically a simple inspection does not typically get put out to bid.
Yeah, but this was a first-time deal.
Been quite a while, yes.
Yes. Have we had, you, are we aware, have we ever had to have another?
Uh, we did it in two thousand and
John Kachet.
Two thousand and six.
Oh, you needed a price on it for, for one thousand five hundred dollars.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion's carried. What else you got, Michael?
That's all I have this week.
Uh, Bob, I ran into Roger Nitch yesterday and he told me that Wheat Drive, which is a mile north of the Bethany Church and west past where Aitney used to live, well, I think it's that first mile though. Said going up that hill, that the gravel is gone and dirt's dirt, so. I told him I would mention it to you to put it on your list.
Yeah, as soon as they finish where they're at, they're heading up in that area. Do some for Rick's territory up in there.
Yeah, Richard, or Roger said it was getting pretty bad through that mile. I hadn't been up there for quite a while, but.
I know, there's a stream, there's wet, there's several spots in there. Yeah, I know, there's a stream, there's wet, there's several spots in there. Get hurt again.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You have anything, Bob?
Uh, like I say, we're just still working on that bridge up there, four seventy. And, uh, out here, have a, got a peace agreement here. So I had, did it up there, we haven't been in there for a long time, and he would like to, there's still some pile in there that would never hold out over the years, and he would like to kinda clean that up if he could, and he'd like to dig a little more, looking around if he could find some more in there, so. He got this agreement signed with it, brought it in the other day.
So, where, where is that, where's that gonna be?
Uh, it'll be over there off of, let's see. Twenty, yeah, it'll be thirty, thirty is there. South, Sylvin, back there. Move down a mile, well, two miles south of Myers Field Lock, you know.
This is a pre-existing one?
It was, they, they haven't hauled anything out that long when-
Not since I've worked here, it hasn't been used.
You know, about the last, like I said, shortly before I retired, before, the last I remember hauling out, and I didn't know whether there's any haul out after that or not. He said there's still pile in there, and he'd like to kinda clean it up, so he could put a fence or something in there.
We haven't had an agreement with them, uh, for several years, those things.
Correct, yeah.
So the agreement would be, it's an old bit that they ran years ago.
So, I mean, let's talk price then, what, what are we gonna begin to do? Because if this is potentially being used, you know, we're at the end of the year, what are we gonna do for two thousand eighteen? If we have a hundred thousand dollars in the budget, and we're gonna up the price to two dollars a yard, that means we can haul fifty thousand cubic yards of gravel, which is half as much as what he says our maximum potential hauling is, which we didn't reach this year regardless, correct?
Correct.
Do you know how many total yards we've hauled to this point?
So I don't have that total with me.
The, is that something that's in any of your reports from the line items under their budget?
I can look in the line item, but there will be rock in it.
From quartzite? Do you know what the total was from quartzite, so that we can deduct that?
Well, I think we can sign the agreement and then adjust the rate, whatever we adjust the rate.
So we have to do about once.
Yeah, we're gonna do that on all of our bits. We're just gonna adjust the rate, notifying that we're adjusting rate.
We have a motion to enter into agreement with Ed Lad Revocable Trust and Mildred Lad Revocable Trust?
I'd move.
Do I have a second?
Entering the gravel agreement with Ed Lad Revocable Trust.
Do I have a second? I'll second, discussion?
My, my discussion would be, when are we gonna come to a conclusion about how we're going to calculate the price? Who's going to do the math, who's gonna provide the analysis?
I think Michael has the record that has that much gravel involved. He can provide that to us.
Any other discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion is carried. Anything else, Bob?
Yeah, like I say, I guess nothing other than just normal maintenance here, we've been doing some gravel, and like I say, down in Beverly, Westfall area, and we're gonna shit finish up today, and we'll be moving up that corner of the county.
Where we hauling from, down south, Albolt?
Yeah, that all we've got down there right now, until we-
Get some pile?
Roosevelt there. Kind of the same with Lads here, if we've got an opportunity there, all we have is a little grid deal up there now, until we find something else, other locations. That's about all I have, I guess.
Thank you. For your time today, guys.
Thank you, guys.
I got two thank yous for you. One was the gravel on thirtieth that's been spread along there in that southern section, and, um, Vesper Road, one twentieth, down where we talked about last time, south where that little lump was. I got a call that said there was some work done on it, so, thank you.
You bet.
Bye-bye.
Larry? You're up, Larry.
Do we have people out in the hall? I mean, it's kind of our obligation to accommodate just standing room only.
They're using the room downstairs, aren't they?
For someone else?
There was something going on there earlier, you know.
Yes, yes. You bet, Larry.
I appreciate it, I'm not gonna be very long.
Brought the, brought the check, didn't you?
What's that?
You brought a check, didn't you?
Bought cash.
Oh, cash, that's better, that's better. That's better.
That's what you told me to bring, I thought.
Was that what I told you, okay? I didn't like your rubber checks.
I'm not gonna be very long, I've sorta got a cold, I don't wanna pass that song.
Well, yeah, I don't want you, I don't want you sharing either.
And so, I'm just gonna, uh, briefly here give just a very brief update. I believe, uh, our CEO was by here earlier this year, wasn't he?
Yeah.
He was here, but, yeah.
Yeah. Didn't, didn't he bring a check?
Somebody brought a check, yeah, yeah, somebody brought a check.
Well, all this is, is just an update on your insurance usage. I just wanna mention a couple things, and I'm very sure-
Access food, nice to meet you.
Okay, Camp Insurance, uh, I don't know if you're familiar with us or not. We, we, uh, provide here all the insurance in, uh, Lincoln County, except for your health insurance and workers' comp. So we cover everything from property, uh, to casualty, like tornadoes, fires and such as that, and then we cover your, uh, liability also. Uh, and so, as part and parcel of that, you know, we do offer a lot of, a lot of services here. These are our primary risk management services, and at the top here, commissioners, I see that you, we have this, what we call Attorney Assist, and this is, you know, a, uh, one of our oldest risk management services. This is where we offer up what we consider expert legal advice, uh, is from our contract attorneys that specialize in county litigation and county liability matters. And it seems like you've made quite a few calls, which is good, I think, because, you know, you like to try to stay proactive. Uh, so, so far this year, we've had thirty-five contacts here with Lincoln County. Uh, twenty sixteen, it was twenty-four, twenty fifteen, it was fifteen, and twenty fourteen, it was twenty-six. Generally, the people that call these attorneys, uh, or insurance attorneys, are generally the county clerk, uh, the sheriff, public works, and sometimes commissioners due to, and your county councilor, or the county attorney. The Risk Avoidance Grant, you've used the two thousand dollars that we've set aside here, uh, for Lincoln County. And I do have to give some, uh, kudos to Lincoln County because out of all of our counties that are members here that we provide insurance for, which we have seventy counties, Lincoln County and two others have consistently utilized or used this money every year, which is, I think, hopefully, citizens appreciate that because really, it's your money. You know, you pay your premiums every year, uh, and then, you know, this is one way that we bring back money in to you. Each county, we take two thousand dollars we set aside to give it back to you if you use it for risk mitigation. I think here, the sheriff has been a big user of that, and most, most counties, that, that is usually the, uh, department that usually utilizes this Risk Avoidance Grant. The second, second most used, uh, uh, or the second department that uses this grant the most would be the public works, or, you know, Logan Bridge there. And K clinic, uh, we have the, you know, college training is real big now on the internet. And so, therefore, you know, we jumped into this. We offer internet insurance courses, uh, and I see that your health department has taken ten courses here, uh, twenty fourteen. And so, you know, that's, that's what we're there for. Uh, the law enforcement tuition reimbursement is one of our large, uh, risk management, uh, programs. And really, it's just what it is, it's a tuition grant that we give to our sheriff and the deputies, uh, for Lincoln County. Uh, we've raised that tuition grant up to a thousand dollars for this year. So every year, uh, if the sheriff or one of the deputies takes a course that is germane to insurance liability primarily, and there's a tuition cost associated with that, we will reimburse you for that. And as we, as we know, the, the sheriff and the, and his deputies have to have forty hours per year continuing yet. So usually, you can probably pretty, pretty easily utilize this because a lot of their training, they go to, even though the majority of it is free, uh, generally.
Will you pay that expense, the mileage and?
No, it's just, it's just, it's just, it's just the registration, if there's a registration fee. And so, when he goes, if he has to go to Haze to take a special firearms course, and said it'd be a fifty buck, fifty dollar, you know, registration, we'll reimburse for that. And the last one here is a road scholar, it's a lower, it's a, it's a program that we offer similar to the same thing as law enforcement, except for it's Logan Bridge. They take some K dot courses, and there's a tu- tuition, uh, cost to that, or a registration cost, we'll reimburse you for that, too. Uh, and that's it, commissioners. I hate to be brief, but I don't wanna even make anyone, I don't know if I got allergy, if I got a colic, you see my eyes? I haven't been crying cuz I had, because I thought I was coming here, it's just, I can't stop my eyes from watering. And so, generally, I try to take more time than this, but I know that you've got some issues that you're talking about. Uh, any questions, Commissioner, with respect to, oh, on the Attorney Assist, I forgot to mention, usually, most of the calls have to do with liability, and specifically errors and omissions, which is employment practice, you know? And so, I know oftentimes a clerk calls quite a bit because, uh, most counties are, are small, rural counties, and the county clerk is also sort of the ad, ad hoc human resource person. So they take a lot of applications and have a lot of questions. Well, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Anyone gonna be up in Kansas City next week?
What this is doing.
Is that right, going to the business meeting? Okay, well, look forward to seeing you there. Just vote no on everything, that's what I always say.
Thanks, Larry, take care.
Including your wage increase, Larry.
What's that?
Including your wage increase.
Except for that.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Um, yeah, as we talked about here a couple weeks ago, I got a thank you. I would like to see the older minutes be put on the website. I know that that's not gonna happen immediately, but I would also like to see the maps updated, and we are gonna make that motion, not updated, but added to the website. Dawn, is that something that you plan to do, put the maps on there after this election is, has settled?
Potentially. Terry and I have visited, um, I actually kind of like Dickinson County's maps, just because they're a little bit, I don't know. So I just don't know if she can do something like that. So where we actually have, um, basically, they have like one Bay County map, and then they have all of the, um-
Different districts?
Yeah, they have the districts found, drawn out, and then they have like different designs to line out what the member districts are and color-coded between the school districts, because there's, there's more than just two school districts in our county, there's four. And our school districts also don't follow the county lines. So you have Mitchell County, you have Osborne County, and Russell County, and you have to be able to get those maps from those other counties to, to make them up. So it's, it's not as simple as just throwing a map out there. And, um, that's why I've been hesitant to, to put out what I've had, is because it's not very clear, and it's, it's understandable to me, who, I work with it every day, but it's not understandable to the general public. And so, um, we've kind of visited a little bit, and I'm just not sure what Terry's capable of doing, and what she's not, and what she has time to help me with. But I kinda like Dickinson County's maps, and they had like different links where you could link to the map, or you could link to a PDF.
Well, I think that would be a great improvement for our website, and, and helpful, because I've gotten a lot of feedback about people's confusion, you know, as far as how, how things are set up. And just to know that when you go in, you know, what, what your township is, what your, you know, what your-
Even, even theirs is a little confusing, cuz it took me a while to figure out what all the dashes and slashes were. And then they, then it dawned on me that they were color-coding the school districts, and so, even though the, the school districts may have had like member one, and member one was all slashed, then they were like differentiated between colors. And I'm still not sure that's not gonna confuse the Lake County people, but-
Well, I would say something's better than nothing at this point. I mean, at least it gives them something to base questions off of. It, it just, I feel like an individual has a responsibility to, to vote, but if they have something to look at, to do their own personal comparison, to know, oh, okay, this is where I live, this is what my district is, maybe this, you know. For example, I had asked you about, um, someone who said that their, uh, registration card didn't list the right district whenever they went in to actually vote, and it was some kind of an error. But how can they possibly assess that without having something to go off of, that everybody can look at and say, this is the map? You know, I think it's important.
Most of the time, what happens is when a voter goes in, and they get a ballot, and they start looking at it, and they realize that they thought they should be voting on something else, they'll ask the election board workers. And it's not as easy with the, with the, um, electronic machines, because they have to ask before they press confirm and send the ballot through. But a lot of them will ask, and a lot of it is, is that, that they are wanting to vote on the person, not on the race. And they don't realize that they're not within the district. I mean, we had a lot of people that wanted to vote on your race, for example, that was not in your race in the election. So you had a lot of people that were asking for that, so, um-
Okay, so the maps are one thing, and I, um, I would like to see us put the, the old minutes up, you know, as, as far as years back, I don't know if you've looked at maybe Ottawa County's website, but for at least a decade, you know, you can just click on the year. And I understand that's a lot of scanning, but-
The past ten years, well, since we've had the website, are probably there. We still need to convert them from a Word to a PDF, so we'll have to.
So-
Cuz, cuz you have features, they call it hide them on the website, so we don't actually remove them, so that if somebody would, um, actually Google them, they can still access the document, but they're on, they're in work right now, so.
Okay, well, I, so you want to put them in the PDF?
Yeah, that way people don't open them up in their Word documents and take, modify them, and take them down to the restaurant and lay them on counters, so.
And how many years back do we have them, like that, what you're saying?
I don't know.
Anything prior to that would have to be scanned in, or?
Um, anything prior to when we have a computer, I think I have, I have, if you hang on a second.
Hannah was adding some of those.
I have, yeah, I have from two thousand and eight, current. Everything else would have to be scanned.
Well, I think that might be a good place to start, just with what you already have, you know, on, in electronic format, so. I move to include the minutes dating back to two thousand and eight on the public website.
They're not there now, Dawn? Oh, do I have a second?
I'll figure it.
Are they there, Dawn, now, or they just need converting?
Um, well, they're hidden, I don't know what year is hidden, you know, when we started adding them to the website, cuz I don't even, I don't know how long we've had the website, but, um, they'll have to be converted. But they'll have to be converted to a PDF, because, you know, I didn't even think about it. And we tried to figure out how to put read-only on, but we can't, can't get it to work, so...
Any other questions? On Thursday? Post, aye? Motion carried.
I was curious, I'll say, why would he be posted at?
They're already there. Why do we need a motion? All she has to do is convert them. I don't, I don't see the purpose of making a motion. She's doing it, working on it at her time, so I didn't think it was a necessary motion. Do you have anything else?
Um, yeah, I wondered, um, Terry, did you want to update us on the council on aging? We had talked about that, the meeting that I had to attend over the phone. We had talked about it, because you and I both went two meetings ago, and you kind of gave an update then, and I didn't go to the next one, and you did. So do you want to give us an update?
I don't know if anything, if anything was actually decided definitely, but there was discussion about the calling of the, changing the date of the meetings, and, and there was a discussion about the, the meeting that was held in the afternoon instead of the morning. I think they, they did have an exact, to discuss some things. I don't think, I think they're going to work on some, I don't know, I don't want to call them policies, but they're gonna work on, I guess you could call it policies for changing meeting dates and, and stuff like that. I can't talk, you know, I can't discuss all the discussions in a different session.
Okay.
But there was discussion.
Um, it's my under, it's, it's my understanding that they voted to not have an audit. That prior this year, they all voted to have an audit. I don't know if it was unanimous, but they voted to have an audit, and so about, I don't know, months have gone by now with no audit. And then they voted again this past meeting to not do an audit.
I think the...
They rescinded, they rescinded the motion to do an audit.
I think what prompted that was that they thought, senior senators go to like Jim Grangle, correct, and she looks over her stuff, and...
They went to the senior, she was quite cross, clearly.
Yeah. Where, to do an actual audit, you would have to hire someone. I know Mike Crappie's been looking for someone, and a lot of firms won't do an audit on, on money. And I think the, the estimated cost of it is why they rescinded the motion to do it, I think. I think that they, I think, I think they're all in favor of having someone look at it. It's just finding someone that's not maybe certified auditor, that's gonna cost three or four thousand dollars.
It was my understanding they weren't even able to obtain a bid, so I'm not sure that cost had anything to do with the discussion.
Well, I think they were talking about by the hour, and they, they were going to, they wanted to charge by the hour, and there was no...
There was a company that was interested in the audit, but they needed to get the budget from Teresa, and she refused to give the budget, so they could not charge, they didn't know what to charge, because they, they go, they, they go on by what the five oh one C three monies are.
I think Mike had that, I'm pretty sure.
I don't think it was a budget. I think it was a balance sheet.
Well...
There were two things required, and it was only one thing given, and the other was refused. And at that time, they didn't give it, they just took back the motion.
But I think that was the cost is what they were, which I would agree to a certain extent. It's too bad that, that firms won't, don't want to do a public entity, and the ones that do are the charge for it, so...
Well, there are definitely firms out there, accounting firms, that are certified to do accounting audits on public, and, I mean, we, we have one ourselves on the county every year, so I'm not sure why that would be...
Mike's better consider about, now a time looking for one, before he finally found a firm that was even interested at all.
So there is a firm that's interested, and they ask for, and they ask for financial information from the council on aging in order to give a bid on the, on the actual audit, but that financial information was withheld, and therefore, now there's no audit, and they rescinded the motion to get the audit.
Mike told me that he asked for the information, and he received what Mike told me.
He received part of it, half of it.
Well...
There's two different things that...
He, he told me on, I believe it was a Friday, he received one of them, and then he told me on Monday that he had received the other. That's what he told me.
Well, it was my understanding from the outcome of that meeting that, that the full information wasn't provided in order to get the actual bid from the company who was willing to give a bid on it.
Mike told me that, that he got that. That's all I know.
I believe Teresa said that she only gave the information that she gets to the commissioners. That's the only information she wanted to get out.
At the last meeting? That's what she said?
I don't, I don't recall her saying that, but Cindy says she did. I'm not gonna say she didn't say that.
So when was the last time that this agency, or council, or whatever you wanna call it, had an audit?
Never.
They've never had an audit?
They've had people look at it.
They've, they've chosen people on the board to look at it.
Well, I think...
I think we used to audit them.
Yeah.
I think that they were part of, in the soil conservation council and aging, the county used to pay to have the audit done.
When was that?
It's, it's been a long time, because I don't think it's been since I've been clerk.
Oh.
I think prior to, so the boards decided that it was not worth the extra money.
Okay, so we're, so we're giving up to two mills to an organization that hasn't had an audit in two decades, is what I'm hearing.
They've had, people have looked at the books, it just hasn't been an official audit.
That's not an audit, Terry, and you know that. People, people looking at the books, I'm, I'm a little startled that you would even say that.
A financial person looking through the, in, the receipts and the, and the spends is somewhat an audit. If there's something there that, I mean, I don't know what you people are digging for, but there's receipts, there's checks, there's, all that's there.
Oh, you've seen all this stuff?
It goes through there about every month. It lists out the checks.
I'm not digging for anything, as you inferred. I'm simply saying that we should be uncomfortable at this table, giving money to an organization that refuses an audit on itself, a professional audit.
There has been other counties asked for the agency just recently, in the last few months.
Saline County actually had a large qualm over their council on aging not having audits. I think we should follow up on that. I think in order to receive the next year's budgeted amount, they should be required to provide us an audit.
It is expensive to have an audit.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see, I just don't see it, spending that kind of money.
That's the only way you know if money is missing or not there, or can squelch any rumor mongering that may or may not be accurate.
Well, and the fact that they didn't even get their full two mills for the next budgeting year, because they have a savings account, there should not be a money issue at all. The money's there to spend to make sure that audit is performed.
It's not that the money's not there. Is it that, is that beneficial to spend the money on?
Absolutely. It's called accountability. So you're saying that you would prefer that the county not be audited every year, because we have to pay for it, because it's not beneficial?
No, I'm not saying that.
Oh, that's, it, there's a correlation there, for you saying that if it, if that applies to a situation where it's public money, this is...
Are we gonna audit the senior centers then, because they get money from the council on aging?
I, I think they've had audits. I'm not sure, actually, to say when the last one...
I doubt they had full-blown audits.
I'm not sure when the last one...
That was what was retorted, that Teresa said, if you're, if you're going to audit me, then you senior senators are gonna have to have an audit too.
Well, I mean, I'm not making, I'm not making...
This may only be a personnel issue and not an audit issue. I don't want to go there.
I'm not making, I'm not making a recommend, recommendation that seniors are gonna get audited, because I think there's three audits gonna take place there. At several thousand dollars apiece.
And audit may show that a senior center needs to be audited.
I don't know if they want to be audited, but...
It really isn't their choice if the taxpayers question it.
Well, when I brought this up months and months ago, about third-party solicitors, and what we expect from them when we give them tax dollars, I had said, one of the things that we need to expect is an audit, and, and annual reports. And you said, oh, no, no, they already do all that stuff, and, and we don't need to, to oversee that, or, or make it a duplicate issue. But now, here we are, at the end of the year, seeing that these place, these places where our money is going, these organizations, they don't self-regulate at all. In fact, they're making decisions blatantly to not have any oversight, any, you know, fiduciary responsibility to the transparency of their tax dollars. And I can tell you right now, I personally, as a citizen, have requested financial information that was rejected to me from the council on aging. And as a nonprofit organization, they can attempt to claim, you know, independence all they want, but the fact of the matter is they're one hundred percent subsidized by tax money. They're not just receiving a grant from, from us. They're one hundred percent subsidized, which means they do have to give up their, their financial information. But we have bigger fish to fry on the county level, so I haven't ever pushed that issue. But I'm bringing it up now, because I'm very concerned to learn that we're giving money, and we're, we're creating an extra tax that the people voted on themselves to self-impose. And then we're not requiring any follow-up and any accountability.
I'd like to say something, and the, the idea of the meetings being held at different times, there was supposed to be notice for members and council members, and there were four people that were not notified of the change, uh, which was a coma violation, which the county attorney passed out information at the last meeting in packets. It wasn't brought, should have been brought to the meeting, and that's what that was, but it was kind of like, we'll read it and talk about it next month.
Yeah, they wanted, they wanted, they had just got them, some of them, and they wanted the opportunity to review them.
It's my understanding that this is the second time that the county attorney has been asked to intervene with this group and tell them how or how not to proceed with things. And, you know, that's a concern.
No, Alexis said a lot of things that could be considered improper. I mean, the Sylvan Senior Center made an attorney payment back in March for an attorney that was handling the civil seat for some people over there.
No, they didn't.
I believe I can prove it to you here.
Are you, are you saying there was a motion to do that? Yes, there was. Did a payment ever take place? No.
There was a motion to do it, and next month, there was a thank you letter.
There was never a payment on that. That was discussed as being improper, and I can personally attest to that, because my personal finances were involved with that.
I know that were.
There was never, ever a payment made for...
Not only that, but there were also a couple of people involved in it, or on the board of the senior center.
Are you saying that the motion was made? Yes.
Yeah, it was.
And I'm telling you that that payment never happened.
Well, I don't know whether it happened or not. I'm just saying the motion was made and it was approved.
Then you should be extra concerned about an audit right now. That should really have your eyeballs open about needing an audit then, because then you can find out if that ever happened.
I think it's their money. If that's what they choose to do with it, whether it's proper or legal, I think that was their decision.
So you just said...
There are all kinds of things that can turn up in an audit.
Verbatim, you just said, I think it's their money, and they can do what they choose with it, whether it's legal or proper, that's their decision?
I can't control them. I can't say. You can't give money to that. You can come back after the fact and say that.
An audit would clear up a lot of these things.
It's a simple solution.
Not saying just one.
It's a normal solution in the professional world.
And whether mill levy is being used one way or the other is a good question to ask.
Five oh one C three's money is public, whether it's mill levy money or what they call private money. It's a five oh one C three.
Then why is financial information being withheld then? If you know that, like you just said, which is true.
Mike Crappie told me he had deals. That's what he told me.
Well, we can call Mike.
He called me on Friday, and told me he got, received one of them. He called me a day or two later and told me that he had received the other one. I guess maybe it's a text message. I don't remember if it's fun called a text message.
At the public meeting that we were both in attendance to, she said that she did not have to give the other information, that the information would be at the commissioners. So the people in attendance really were like...
But that's not the information that was needed. It was my understanding that the firm wasn't, the auditing firm wasn't going to give the bid unless there was a balance sheet and a profit and loss statement.
Correct.
Those were the two things they needed. And I know that we do not receive as the county a balance sheet or a profit and loss, because I questioned that, and Dawn, you told me that all she had to do was turn in a report of general expenses. It wasn't even itemized.
No, it was not items. Then I asked her for the items, and she never received it.
So there's another person that has requested that financial information that has yet to be provided. I mean, it, it's ultimately our responsibility, you know? You can say, Terry, that it's their money, but it's not. It came from the taxpayers.
No, I said, they, it's, they have the money. They can spend it. I can't stop them. I can come back after the fact and do something, but I can't stop them from spending the money on something.
Well...
You don't have the right to go sit in their meeting and void a check that they write.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that this goes back to my previous discussions with you about how to hold third-party solicitors accountable to the money that we give them. If we require certain things upfront before that money is given, then we can safely know that that money, which has been distributed, has a history of being spent properly, and we don't have to hear all of these discrepancies, especially with a local organization. We're not even talking about the things that may ha, may or may not happen with these organizations that we're funding in Salina, for example.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
You know what I hear about all this today? What I see the problem is that these discrepancies with this, that as soon as the commission could, could eliminate, shut down the mill levy for the, the, for the agent, and put it to the road department for the gravel, we would have a lot better, better run county. We would have better roads, and the elderly at these centers and the council would use the money that they got, take care of themselves. When things got down to where they were really begging for money, and they needed it, you could start the program up again. I'd say eliminate it and put it to gravel.
Howard, I think if you had your choice, you'd eliminate everything for the gravel.
I'd eliminate quite a few things. But I would, but the, the problem of really cutting down on the amount of gravel is gonna be detrimental to the transportation in the county though. And this, this bickering over who's spending what money for, I think that need to focus on what the county really needs to do. They need to work on those roads. That's my opinion, my opinion.
That doesn't solve the question at hand, though, is how money's already have been utilized, and who they have gone to, to help, which was a decision made in the past to go for seniors in this county, all seniors, not seniors living in a certain part of the county.
Okay, anything else? Yes, move on. Anything else to come before this commission today?
So are you willing to require an audit before distributing tax dollars?
I'd like to see a, I'd like to see a cost of the audit.
Now, you just got done saying that you're not interested in micromanaging their finances at their meetings, but now you want to know the cost, and you, you can't just come out and say that you think an audit would be a good idea. You just said the money is in the bank. We just had this discussion. You said money is not an issue. I told you they have a savings account built up. That's why we did not...
But Howard wants to use the audit money for gravel.
Well, we can't, because the, the, the public vote was, the public vote was specific to those two mills going to, actually, it says service programs. It, it doesn't say that it has to go to the council at all. It's just that that council is who solicited for the actual public vote to happen, so...
It may be a personnel issue. It may be, that might be what your audit finds out. Just saying.
Is there anything else to come before this?
I move to require an audit report from the Lincoln County Council on Aging, prior to distributing any further mill levy due to the fact that...
That's a long motion.
We are unaware of any previous audit on this organization.
Do I have a second? The motion will die for lack of second. Do I have anything else before I adjourn this meeting?
Um, yes, I just wanted to restate that in the minutes, as it described last week, Aljo, you and I have a difference of opinion on what the statutes mean that relate to our elected officials creating contracts or making payments out of their own, um, funds, their own budgets. And I don't think it's appropriate to rely on my opinion, I don't think it's appropriate to rely on your opinion. Terry didn't give an opinion. I would suggest that we find an opinion, which is, that's not a matter of, you know, um, it's not a matter of accusing someone. It's a matter of clarification. And if we don't do that, we are continually opening ourselves up to these types of accusations. And while that makes you feel uncomfortable, as is obvious in the past, I think the only way to truly combat that is to bring it to light and settle it. So if you're confident that there's not a problem with the way Lincoln County has been doing these things and has certain contracts, then why wouldn't we just affirm that with an actual legal, you know, reliable source? I asked the county attorney myself and she did not wanna give an opinion, so that's protocol, you know, going through the chain of command. I did that before it ever even came up at the commission table. I gave her the benefit of primary contact. So the next thing that we should do, and if you're sure of yourself, I don't see why you would have a problem with it, is to seek that attorney general opinion. Are you willing to do that?
No, I'm not. Going to vote for a motion to do that, so if that's your question, no, I won't vote for it.
Okay, I move to request attorney general opinion on Lincoln County's compliance with KSA seventy-five dash forty-three oh one A and KSA seventy-five dash forty-three oh four regarding contract between county attorney budget and O'Hare Law LLC.
Do I have a second? The motion will die for lack of second. Do I have anything else before this board?
Um, you just indicated that, you know, you're, you're not interested in doing that. Does that mean that I'm to interpret that your personal opinion is the ultimate authority here?
You can interpret it any way you want to.
If you're sure that you're right in your assumptions, then why are you afraid to request an attorney general opinion?
Do you think I'm afraid?
Yes, I do.
So be it.
Okay, if you're not afraid, then why, then if you're, if you're sure of your assumptions, then, then why would you not get that affirmation to, to put my question to rest?
Do I have anything else come before this board?
Yes, I move to allow commissioners access to read only documents for computer, electronic research. Reducing clerk's office secretarial duties to the commission.
Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of second.
I move to schedule the end of the month meeting to an evening time to encourage public attendance.
Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of second.
My last point of discussion is, um, what, what are your plans to address some of the problems that we're facing in the county? Can, can you identify any of those problems verbally?
You know, somewhere along the line, I think you've got the feeling that I answer to you, that I answer to my constituents, you see what I answer to you. But you can ask me all the questions you wanna ask me, I don't care. If I wanna answer, I will, if I don't, I won't.
Do you have any questions for me? Does your lack of a response indicate that you don't feel that we have any issues to be dealt with within the county?
I told you. But somewhere along the line, you got the idea that I have to answer.